Want to look at yours?
Absolutely, yeah.
We good to go?
Yep.
All right, well then, it's four o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the Solid Waste Special Services District number one, colloquially known as the Canyonland Solid Waste Authority, to call it to order. Let's see, present is myself, Chad Harris, board members, Mary McGann, Colin Topper, Diane Ackerman is with us virtually. Also, staff members, Lily, Jessica, and then Mike.
And Nick.
And Nick.
Oh, and Nick, yes, I always forget Nick. Hey, Nick.
Chris will be back shortly.
Okay. Let's see, first on the agenda is citizens' input. Are there any citizens to be heard?
No, we don't see anybody. No, there isn't anybody.
Nobody? Okay. Moving on, we're gonna move to the item A, approval of meeting minutes. Review and approval of February twenty first, two thousand twenty four regular meeting minutes, and the March first, two thousand twenty four special meeting minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve March twenty first, and February twenty first, and March first, regular meeting and special meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mary.
And I'll second that.
Colin, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Mary, oh, I guess we can do it.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Item B, treasurer financial review and approve February twenty twenty four financials.
He also took up the board conference, Jessica. I believe it's page eight, or ten. All right, um, so our expenditures in February were five hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. So payroll expenses were about sixty-three thousand dollars less than in January. And again, that first payroll in January was quite large because of four holidays, which paid our drivers time and a half. And January also included two insurance premiums, which are about fifteen thousand dollars each. So, you know, like thirteen thousand for the holidays and fifty thousand for the insurance. Operations expenses, though, were more. There was a large payment to Wheeler Cat that was just open invoices that hadn't been received. So we were able to pay that. Fuel expenses were less than in January, and it was a billing error. They were charging a sales tax. So that nine thousand dollars.
Who was charging the sales tax?
Oh, it was Rela Dine, their local sleep fuel. So it'll just show up in March, so it kind of just moves when we look here to next month. And let's see, vehicle repair and maintenance was just over fifty-five thousand, but that does include the almost twenty-nine thousand, five hundred that was paid to Wheeler Cat for those open invoices that were from two thousand and twenty-three. Let's see, I did print a check for the PTIF then, but it hasn't been sent out yet due to cash flow. It's just hard to get a hundred and eight thousand dollars in the bank at one time to send off. So I've been thinking about breaking it up into two smaller checks to try and just get it out in more of a timely fashion.
And may it be okay with that?
I don't know. Do I need their?
Do we need that?
They, it would probably.
I can reach out.
Cause some accounting issues, but there's no reason they shouldn't be able to work that out.
If there's just two checks rather than one, I can, it was just something I was brainstorming about.
That's a great idea, just communicate it.
Yeah. Are there any questions about the financials?
Well, I see a lot of these on sign checks.
You get to see them.
So I make a motion that we approve the expenditures for February twenty twenty four to the tune of five hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars in either thirteen or sixteen cents.
Oh, I may have had to typo my apologies.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, aye. Motion passes for zero. Next item is staff reports. Mike?
All right. I always try to start with a month review as far as trucks and staff. We're still waiting for the roll-off that got fired. We're rebuilding. They had to build a wiring harness, harness. Trucks just sold. They did not have one sitting on a shelf anywhere. But we're hoping two to three weeks tops. Tops. We're gonna definitely need it by then, too, as things pick up. The rearload trucks have been time-consuming, and with just one mechanic on staff, a lot of the bodywork that's having to be done is just taking considerable amount of time.
Did that new mechanic not?
He will be starting April fifteenth. He's moving from Minnesota.
Oh, great, okay.
Wow.
Yeah. So he's definitely on. That's one of the bright things we got going.
We cast a white name.
From Minnesota, and he had probably here?
He actually won a trip last summer to come here, and him and the wife said, why not? So they started looking for places to work.
We, we need to sponsor more trips.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. I hope they like it. Everybody loves to visit, and then they come here and discover there's not a Walmart, and it's a hundred and twenty miles to buy a pair of shoes.
Living out of their camper.
Well, he was, he's got an RV or camper, and he was gonna go that route to start, but evidently they did find, I guess you'd say, permanent housing. So they've already got that lined up.
Awesome.
They must come with some funding finances. Good. What's his name?
Mike Johnson.
Everybody think he's quite related.
So as far as, I guess, being where we want to be operationally, with our main trucks a hundred percent to start the busy season, we're certainly not there. But we are working to complete an operational shift where we're using trucks and employees a little bit different, and it turns out to be a little more efficient. So we're gonna, it's working out. We've been testing that, and it's working out well, so we're gonna move full, full bore.
In what way are you shifting?
We changed the cardboard route. We had a driver doing the cardboard in the morning, and then he would start his residential route. We have switched. We're using the recycle truck for cardboard in the morning, the small little one. They're doing that, and then we immediately go to the recycle route. So the recyc, does two things. It uses the employees efficiently. Certain guys aren't as fast as others, plain and simple. So you could, you know, you, you work with what you got. That, the driver of the recycle truck, he's just extremely fast. So he gets it up a little bit faster on the same amount of time that the other driver did. And we also, the garbage trucks never touch any of the recycling, no. So there won't be any confusion or anybody saying, hey, I saw you dump that as garbage. Nope, that is the recycle truck a hundred percent. So better use of the equipment, better use of the employees, where they fit better. That's just a puzzle, basically. Staff, like, we do add that new mechanic. We had an operator start just yesterday. And we've got a new route helper starting on the first. I was impressed with the amount of applications we've had. We're still getting a few. We're still advertising just in case. But we're filling the holes that we had last month, rather rapidly. I, could be a lot worse.
So what's the current status? Are we, how understaffed are we currently?
We, Chris, we're shifting people. Chris had another idea. We're gonna try and get by with one less operator. And that kind of frees up a body. We're also kind of combining operator slash driver slash helper, kind of a all-purpose person. But he's gonna be trained in all those. He's gonna have all the CDs and all the experience, so we can put him wherever we need him. It was a real good idea.
Utility info.
Basically, yes. Somebody that can play any bass in the outfield or whatever you wanna call it. So that's gonna give us more flexibility. When this other helper starts the first, I will say we're backed about as good of staffing as we can expect. Thanks to his idea of giving it a shot with one less operator. That kind of coincides with Mike Randall's leaving. He's retiring April twelfth. So.
How long has he worked here?
Three and four years.
Well, it's hard to tell, cause he came on board when we were going through.
Okay, so it hasn't been a long time. He's not.
Yeah, like two, three, maybe four years, but he's played an important role in trying to keep a lot of things together. I mean, he's very able to utilize his experience from UDOT. He was the maintenance supervisor at UDOT for like twenty-six years, so he was able to step in and just kind of keep things together when we really needed it. So.
Definitely. His experience, so.
When is his last day?
April twelfth, Mike Randall. Using his experience, we were able to, we knew he would be there. We wouldn't have to worry too much about him, basically. And so that, that, he took care of flatbed workers. So pretty close to what I would call where we want to be after this next helper. It would be ideal if we had one more operator and if we had one more CDL driver. But we've got a couple that are getting really close, finally getting through the school. So that should help. If you've got a guy that can drive a bulldozer and drive a semi, it just gives you so much more flexibility, depending on who calls in and gets hurt, that type of thing. Not gonna work if one hurts.
Do we, do we pay for, for those employees to go through the school and get their CDLs?
We haven't yet.
We haven't yet.
It was all based on grants, working coinciding with Utah State out of Moab and out of Landin. But that funding has ran out, so any future people that we try to run through the program, we'll have to pay.
And, and will they be under contract in some way to retain them?
We've, we've, we've discussed that. I mean, we, we really can't put people on a contract just to work, to stay working here, but we can put them on the contract to maybe pay us back if they fail. Cause I mean, that's really the opportunity that we're given. This, this school will get them their Class A with all their endorsements if they want. And I mean, it's, it's good for us if they stay. It's good for them in the future if we can convince them that they stay for us a little while, but it'll also set especially some of these younger people off to, you know, an accretion. And I mean, that's, you know, how I kind of started in, in the trash industry, so.
Well, we're definitely considering that somehow to, you know, write it up that, you know, they don't get their vacation if they leave before this amount of time or that type of thing.
And talk to people that share themselves, because they put their officers through training, and I know they have something set up, but they can't just do their training. And all they do, they do move on, but there is some type of.
Yeah, and, and I think that's fair. I mean, even in a benefits both, both parties, just then we want to make it fair. So, yeah, it's definitely under discussion.
One other positive, one of the operators that left us missed us pretty quick and came back around. He, he left to go to the mines, did not like it as much as he thought, even if he was making more money, and now he's back with us. So.
No training.
Exactly, exactly. And the timing couldn't be better. What was Jeep Safari, the busy season is here. So not where we want to be, but it certainly could be a lot worse.
It sounds good. Doc, what did you then we have?
AMC, the story continues. Slowly continues, but we are making progress every week. We're getting closer. The drivers are certainly more comfortable with it. We're having less routing issues, that type of thing. We're hoping to be billing out of it this month. We're, it looks like it's gonna happen. So that, that'll be a major step in the right direction.
It wasn't supposed to be so easy.
Yes.
I thought it was.
So it's, it's gonna be promising. It is. But we did have a very serious conference call with them this month about the amount of hours that they want to bill us. It's double over what we were quoted when we signed the contract before I got here. We had a very serious discussion and I wrote the vice president email, and it's been radio silence since. I basically asked them to do the right thing, but you obviously underquoted. And basically, we're leaving the customer service implementation phase, moving into the, the, where we just call for help from the customer service desk, you might say. And they're wanting to hand us off to them, and we're not quite ready for that. So we, there's gonna be a few more hours as they work out some of these bugs. I have admitted it wasn't all their fault, but when you quote three hundred and sixty-nine hours and actually put on the bottom of the email, if we don't use all the hours, we won't charge you. So I pointed that out to the vice president pretty, pretty strongly and said, I, I'd like you to do the right thing, and I haven't heard anything back. So we're addressing that as best we can at this time. They, they, they just gotta keep helping us, plain and simple. Glass recycling option for the city of Moab. Diane, I'm sorry, I didn't send this to you, but I will send this to you after the meeting. I apologize. I, I should have known you might not be here, and I should have sent it to you to be on the safe side. I sent it to Colin yesterday as a city rep. If you hand it, thank you.
I think Jessica's gonna send it to you now, Diane.
Oh.
Is that what you're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This is the best option we've been able to come up with. Made an appointment with Carly to discuss it with her next week. Basically, this doesn't require us any additional equipment or to build a special pad. Basically, we use an existing event container, which is just a big roll-off dumpster with doors on the side. If the city can find a place to put that, residents can drop it off there. When it's full, we bring it back here. We load it into a forty-yard dumpster. And when we have enough of glass, which it takes forty tons of glass, they will actually come and pick it up from momentum.
How many forty-yard dumpsters do you anticipate that being? Just one. Oh, great.
We might have to split it into two just because of the weight, because of the weight.
Oh.
To pick it up.
Yeah.
Like, what if, like, when you pick it up and haul it away, like, what do, what do residents do in the interim before it comes back empty?
They'll swap it probably.
Well, there's, or, or.
It, it depends on what ones we have. We could also just what we call dump and return.
Yeah.
So it'll be like less.
Even if we round trip it, empty it here, it, yeah, it'll be gone in an hour.
Oh.
Tops. Basically, I stayed away from this at first because I didn't want to put any more stress on the transfer, any more traffic, any more anything. But Chris came up with this because it's basically the way we used to handle single stream.
Okay.
There is a place back there where the forty-yard sits, and you can just back up and dump into it. Wasn't the best system, especially with paper, because it would go flying. But with the glass, it ought to come out pretty, pretty straight, pretty much like foreign dirt.
So, so, so they will be instructed not to put the glass in those containers.
In the single stream, yes.
Yes, when it be a bit of an education.
Yes, this is all based on pulling single stream out. As everybody knows, we're the last curbside collection in the state that still picks up glass in, in single stream.
And we are offering a place for them to take them. They also can take them to the recycle center.
Exactly. They've already got the CRC. But they made it quite clear they were looking for another option. So this requires the city to find a location for us. We provide the equipment. And then if they will pay for our time to haul them. It's the cheapest, most efficient, least amount of capital expense possible.
And it still gets the glass recycled, which is important to a lot of people.
And we could probably work in a, a reduction in, because we can take the glass from the recycle center and put it into the same stream, because it all goes to the same place anyways, so it'll minimize our. No, we left, we left it unsorted, just because that's what recyclers tell you to do. So we established a system. We didn't want to start mixing it together and then have to go back to trying to train people to sort it, so we just left it.
Okay, so you do go back.
In case there was something that came up, so.
Cause I always resort mine.
Exactly.
But, but they, so you're just preparing for the possibility of going back to wanting it sorted.
Once, once you give somebody that convenience to mix, it's hard to get them to stop.
And there was, at one time, and it was a couple of years ago, there was price differences on them, but all that's gone away now.
What, do you have a guess what that fee will be, the hauling from the city's location?
I easily come up with one.
But we're just doing, the city's not being charged for.
Sounds like the city is being charged, yeah.
I, I would expect the city to pay for our time for the haul. We probably wouldn't charge for any rental on the box like we do with most people, but we would look to recover our, our costs of our time, basically. There is no disposal cost, so that's a good thing. There's some pros and cons. Obviously, free transportation. Somebody comes and picks it up all the way from Salt Lake City is huge. We do have containers we can use now. Those are containers that could be used elsewhere, but they don't get used all the time. We call them event boxes. We don't know how long it would take to fill the drop-off. So it could be two hauls a year, I'm guessing. I don't know. It depends on where it's at and how, how much the public paid to it. We don't know how long it would take to fill. We won't know that till we start it.
So I have a couple of questions, Mike.
Sure.
Momentum will come and pick it up when we have, how much?
Forty tons.
And how do we know when we have forty tons?
It's gonna be a guesstimate. We, we can be close based on how much glass, how much glass weighs, you know, per pound, and, and how full our dumpsters are. We'll be putting it into a forty. We'll fill it halfway. We don't, we don't think we'll be too far off. We might be a little shy, but I don't think Momentum will, will have any problems.
So how many forty-yard containers do you imagine will be sitting back behind the transfer station that will equal forty tons?
We would probably use two of them and fill them each up halfway. When the truck comes, then we can put it on the transfer floor and load it just like we do the transfer trucks. They can drive around. That's why we don't have to pour a cement pad or any other equipment, because we've already got the loader right here.
Sure.
Okay. And then I guess the final question is, I, I imagine that you, you talked to Colorado, and that didn't work out.
Well, the negotiations and the talks are still there. It's just this is where they send their glass anyway. So it doesn't make much sense to ship it over there just to have them ship it up there.
Okay.
Yeah, I double-checked with, with, with Grand Junction, and they definitely send it to Momentum at, at this time.
And so Momentum comes and picks it up and doesn't charge anything because they get the money, they get the product.
Exactly. And then they use it for, to make insulation.
Okay.
So so they're, they're, they're getting, what's the word? They're getting feedstock, feedstock, feedstock. It, it, it's free, not completely free, because there's a transportation cost, but it's discounted feedstock for whatever product they're making.
Pink Panther insulation.
That, that's a big one.
So, so you're gonna talk to the city, you said, next week about?
Yes, I showed it to Colin yesterday. He was gonna speak to him as well, but I have already set up a meeting with Carly.
And I've already spoken to them.
Oh, okay, good.
And I, the one thing that I did get wrong in my presentation to them was I, I, and now I look back at my email, and you absolutely said that, the, the fee for hauling it, but it sounds like that fee is gonna be pretty minimal, just based on the frequency of such a lot.
An hour round trip, I mean, we can pull up our fee schedule.
Yeah, and so everything else that I, all the, the response that I received was really positive for that, and that they're already looking for a spot with them, so.
It should be equal to or less than what they're paying now for the roll-off from the public works, because there's no disposal. I haven't put pen to paper yet, but it shouldn't take long to have a price.
That's great, yeah.
And Mike, who's gonna pay for the education, the outreach to tell people not to put it in the single stream anymore? How's that gonna look?
That is a good question. I haven't started that yet, because we weren't sure what the system was gonna be. We all feel pretty confident we're gonna get it out in the single stream, but of course, it's not official yet, so I didn't want to start floating that out there and confuse people. But I'm hoping to work with the city, and then of course, we've got Jessica, and we'll be doing advertising and flyers and whatnot. After we know what we're doing, then we can plan it out a little bit better.
Yeah.
Would we, if, if and when we make this switch, will our single stream immediately stop accepting glass, or will there be a overlap?
And that's, that's the good thing about this. It could just, the more we pull out, the better our contamination rates are. So even if there's still residual glass getting thrown in there, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Okay, so like even in perpetuity, we could still have occasional glass in a single screen.
Yeah, we get all kinds of horrible stuff.
But we still need, like Diane said, we still need to educate everybody.
Definitely. Door hangers, we could have the drivers, you know, after they dump the can, put a, a door hanger on the car. There, there's all kinds of things we can do.
That's a good idea. That's probably the most efficient.
I don't know.
Exactly.
The drivers might not agree that it's most efficient, but.
Effective the word. I won't be, that day it'll take them longer to do their route.
Yeah, I agree.
If we figure out an easy way for them to attach it.
Well, and actually, that might be something that we should do periodically anyways, just to educate people what should be going in there.
Agreed, yeah.
It's gonna be a slow process. I mean, we'll still be getting glass, you know, months from now, unfortunately. But it'll, it'll slowly but surely take hold.
I look forward to having some more real estate in my garage when I get rid of all the stuff sorted. I have like four recycle bins in there, because I take everything to the CRC. And now, once I can get glass out of the, of the single stream, I'm just gonna start using my, my neighbor's single stream. I share a single stream with my tenant.
Ah, what?
Sorry. Shouldn't be saying this out loud. I pay for a single stream can and I use the CRC. That's, that's what I meant to say.
Exactly.
That is the truth.
That's what, that's what we do, too. Actually utilize both systems.
So hopefully that'll go well. I, I don't know any reason why it wouldn't at this point. Are we good with glass for now?
When, when do you think we'll know if this is, is a go? I'm gonna want to report it in two weeks at the commission meeting unless it's a go. I'll double check.
Okay, that sounds good.
I'll write it on my notes.
Because no matter what, after talking to Carly, she's gotta go for the council as well. And I haven't seen the lawyers writing up the agreement, so I haven't seen that yet.
I'll hold off on reporting.
Everything is on schedule to happen by the end of May. When it can actually be, common knowledge is another story.
Okay, I won't report it until.
Okay, I I won't report it until in the May.
That's the same thing at this point. The transition from LJ to Lily is complete at this point. Yeah, Lily's Lily's driving now. I already mentioned Mike Randall's retirement and how we're making plans and moving people around. Uh we had that meeting with San Juan County uh Solid Waste Director and County Administrator. Uh went really well, opened up a lot of lines of communication. Um really nice, actually. They they're like, if you need some assistance with heavy equipment or or something, something goes down. They offered that to help out. Um Chris has actually uh met with the solid waste uh person twice. Uh we invited him to stop by and he did because he wanted to see how the transfer station worked. So we definitely got that line of communication open.
Oh, good.
Plus, a- at the uh sym- uh symposium Chris went to, they sat down and had some talks too, so doesn't hurt to know the neighbors well.
Oh, that's really good.
Yeah. Mulch is for sale. If you weren't aware of it, March first, we started selling it. The only other thing I have um was the the Grand County Attorney sent us a uh asking us to comply. It really caught us off guard. Um they thought we were involved already. It has to do with cleaning up the the shooting range next door to the Moab landfill. Evidently, there's some grant money uh that they're becoming coming their way. Um I have not talked to the attorney. Uh the administration person was gonna try and set up a meeting. No, actually, from the attorney's office, I think Christine. If she doesn't get back to me by tomorrow, I was just gonna hit her up again and say, hey, uh it it really confused us because it caught us off guard. Uh we haven't done any work on any county property. We uh so it really caught us off guard.
Well, we are on kind of property.
Well, technically city county property, the the landfill itself.
But I mean, are we, are we getting anything onto the old shooting range?
Oh. No, so we 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 have, we we have not done anything on it and this is a cease and desist. But
Well, that's what I responded back. I'll I'll be glad to comply if I know what you're talking about, basically. And that caught her off guard. She thought we'd been in discussions, which we haven't. Um which got us digging because there's numerous resolutions saying, you know, that this should be part of what we're dealing with, help clean remediate the old gun range.
Cause we've talked about it.
We've 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 talked about it. There's been internal discussions and even though we haven't encroached on this area, we have been planning that that was something that we were gonna do as a kind of a total picture, end end game type thing. So we we've made moves, we spent money, assuming that we were gonna do that. Uh the previous executive director has uh drafted some some resolutions. I mean, but I I knew this was going on. Jessica was able to actually go up and pull up resolutions from the county ratified by the city, ratified by the uh uh Castle Valley, ratified by the state. So we've been given authority o- over this through re- resolutions. And in my mind, if 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 they think they can cease and desist, and I I think that's kind of an aggressive way to put this. Our resolutions, that means they can cease and desist our whole organization because that's what we're built on is resolutions.
Yeah, I I thought when I read the letter, I thought, you know, a phone call would have been nice. You know, anything to, you know, call me. I'm, you know, I'm in, let's say, what's, you know, but no, what, we get this letter. And I immediately emailed him and said, you know, I, we have, we will comply if we know.
They um inspection and evidence received by the county, blah, 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 demonstrate that some encroachment of historic dirt work has occurred on county home property. We have not done any encroachment. I can guarantee you that. Um so we're gonna find out more. Um we obviously would like to be involved, one because it's right next door. In a way, it it does more than butts up because the the shooting range builds up and we're above it, so depending on where the lead contamination is, it it could be kinda like underneath our fence, so to speak. Um so it it will affect us. Um but we went out to look to just make sure. Did we miss something? But no, we haven't missed anything. Um Christine at the attorney's office said this was more of a cross your Ts, dot your Is. Because of the grant money, certain things they had to do. Uh but yeah, she was surprised that we had not been involved. Um we'd like to get involved.
Well, and and we're gonna be one way or another because the the lines are crossed with the DEQ. So I mean, we we and we and we have expanded. We haven't expanded into the into the shooting range. But there's, I mean, given that we're we're operating so close to a pre-recorded dump that has, you know, don't even need to say what's what's underneath that. The plan was that uh they they did a ver- vertical expansion and granted us the class four uh permit for the landfill to cap all that horrible stuff on there. So i- in a sense, if you just look at it um geometrically, I mean, that's kinda within stuff that we're gonna have to be dealing with anyways, especially when we get into closure, post-closure. Um I'm not sure what their intent in in trying to do this is. And I mean, and like I said before, we had been planning on, that was something that we were gonna, we were gonna do.
Will it be helpful for me to contact the stupid stocks and say I wanna set up a meeting with you and uh the two of you and maybe follow them or just the three of us?
Well, that's pretty much what Christina said, but we haven't heard.
Sometimes, oh, I could, you know, I can say, not, 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 we really wanna know what's going on here, please. Please set up a meeting as soon as possible.
And I think there could be an opportunity for like shared resources if we knew what was kinda going and how we've talked before. The decisions we have to make go over Moab landfill. I mean, this is all part of that same same discussion.
So I'll be there. I'll 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 email tomorrow and say something.
I appreciate that.
Next week, please. Uh have find time to meet with the
That would be fantastic because I I really think we, not only is it in resolutions that we should be involved or I feel like we should be because odds are the material might end up going to fondue possibly. You know, we've got bulldozers right next door.
What's in there?
What?
Oh, just from the shooting range, should you say that used to be a dump too?
Uh well, no, it's close to the, so Moab landfill, our C and D is built once with vertically expanded over the old dump.
Oh, okay.
So there's there's horrible stuff all over in that area.
Okay.
And I know in the in the past, there's been, you know, developers have had right ideas on what they think they can do with like their the recycling center and and near the the old dump and and there's just like, it's it's pretty unrealistic. I know that money talks and maybe they got so much money, they can just move the whole dump. I mean, I've seen that. Tried, tried. But that's that's quite the expensive endeavor endeavor.
Uh your report?
Other than, other than uh the board vacancy situation and I've seen some emails going back and forth that there are people might be interested.
We're gonna talk about that in my board report. But you seem to be.
I know Jessica put it together so that they there's a link that they can apply to that email that she sent out.
Thank you.
Um which is excellent, so makes it even easier, puts it right in their inbox if we know where to send it.
Okay. Do you want me to speak to that as well? Like I I've spoken to one person. Danny, he has some interest in applying, but he's also busy and I was frank with him about the amount of um engagement this board requires. And so he's deliberated on whether or not to apply. Um I guess there's a few others that are out there. I think we should probably reach out to them. Uh Marie.
Marie Brophy. She's a health inspector with the Southeast Utah Health Department. I spoke with Phil Ryan. He didn't think there was a conflict of interest. Um she's interested. I thought Kalen was coming back, so I talked.
Well, he's, he said he would come back for a short period of time.
I misunderstood that, so I can reach out again. She sounded interested.
Like I don't mind talking with her as well.
I can share her phone number.
Okay, yeah, once I would give me a call or.
He was, he would do it for two, he would help us out. If it was gonna, if we thought it's gonna take a while to fill the position or or find somebody or or if somebody's in the waiting and wanna do it later, but he's not interested in taking it all on.
For a year too.
This was willing to step up and help.
Then Colin, you said there was one other?
Uh yep, Mike Dunaway is interested.
So is he, we we should give him this email from Jessica and have him fill out a form or?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you have his email?
Yep. I'm sure I do.
And then there was one more, uh Renee Derrisary. Yeah.
And she said something like, heck no.
She's done with public service for a case a while.
No uncertainty there.
I wasn't gonna call her because I I figured she needed a break. She was burned out.
Yeah.
Okay, well, at least we got.
Candidates, but so far zero applicants, so that's where we are.
And that's all I've got unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Um Chris, you have a staff report?
Um I do, but I think what I'm gonna try, so I I went to uh the symposium. It's the B-Hype chapter of Swana. Um it only happens every two year and man, there is so much information on this. I think I'll just kinda do a written report and email to you guys and then if you're interested and wanna continue the conversation, you you can uh do that. But I mean, it was just one speaker after another and I couldn't, I I wish I could, some way to record it because it's just so much information. What's that?
Was it in Provo?
No, it was, it's down in Springville. So it's actually a nice venue too, so. Right at the mouth of uh Zion's there. Um one one thing that is going to directly affect us is that the DEQ did a presentation down there and the grant that we went after that Jessica worked so hard on, the BDQ was one of the recipients. And what they're gonna do with that money is they're gonna do a characterization for the state of Utah, a waste profile characterization for the state of Utah. So they're gonna be sending uh inspectors, regulators out to thirty-three of the MSW uh landfills in the state of Utah, of which we are one. So they plan on coming down and visiting us for a few days and watching our operation and doing uh waste characterizations, profiles on everything that comes to our landfill. So that ought to be pretty exciting.
I would have much rather gotten that.
But yeah, so that's, I mean, I think overall, they what they're trying to do is a good thing and it does tie into recycling. They're trying to figure out what's going into all these landfills in the state of Utah, how that compares to other states. And you know, how are, because just recently, over the last few years, they've implemented new uh requirements for recycling on reporting tonnages and stuff. There's been some bumps in the road. But they're trying to compare, you know, what's coming in, what's being diverted, uh how how it's working. There was a kinda the tide into this. There was a lady that was doing a zero waste and people are going away from talking about the recycling reuse to uh re- reducing waste generation overall. So so I mean, with with plastic being hit so hard, I mean, it's, they call it the R word now. It's not even recycling. I mean, there's still, everyone's all for it and stuff, but it's just been kinda been beaten up. So the the topic of conversation is moved to zero waste and then to waste uh generation reduction. I- is kind of a talking point.
Reduce reuse, then recycle. We've done it, the opposite. We push recycling and not reducing and reusing.
So but then, so the rest of it, I'll just kinda uh try to put together and then quick thing and then if you guys are interested on the topics, I wel- welcome the conversation. Um one other quick thing, yeah, so his name's Jed Tate, uh the landfill manager of San Juan County. I I've had a couple of discussions with him. He did our tour here. Um there was, and there's uh a lot of opportunities because we're both in the same uh kind of the same situation where our volumes don't necessarily cover the the money that we need. So they are an enterprise fund with something that I was surprised by. I thought they were all fall under their public work to their county. So that their their money went into their general fund, but they're actually now operating as an enterprise fund. So they they have the same issues that we do where their volumes just aren't enough to take care of what they are required to be taken care of by the state. The state requires us to do certain things at our landfills. We don't have the volumes and we're basing, you know, we're we're basing our operations on the money that we're receiving. You know, it's it's kind of a a no win situation. So there's talks of trying to share share some resources. Um nothing concrete or anything uh um so, yeah.
Oh, you've been talking to Matt as well?
Uh Matt was the, was our initial uh conversation.
That you appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think there was, and I mean, and it was kind of an awkward conversation when it first started. It's like, by the way, we're operating in our jurisdiction has expanded, but you know, but I I don't think there's gonna be any issues there. Of course, there's gonna be a little bit of jealousy over the volumes just because we're both kinda starved on volumes and volumes are what gives us money and but there's other opportunities to work together. We've actually even talked about recycling would be at one point where overall recycling is generally a loss. So maybe we can kinda help each other in the loss there and kinda minimize that and and try to up because they don't hardly have any recycling down there.
Yeah, I would say no.
And and there's no, there's, but there is some interest down there.
I think Bluff might be doing.
And we've talked to the guy that's actually doing the uh recycling of Bluff. He brings his stuff to us.
Yeah, he started last year.
So that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Lily?
I think you've heard a lot of it already. We will be billing out of AMCS April first. So merch will be billed out of AMCS. Our plan right now, rather than trying to import the past due balances from Terra Trash, since it's just always a moving target, is to bill any delinquent balances from February out of Terra Trash. Bill out of AMCS. We have to send paper invoices this month, so we'll be combining those. Like so if people have past due balances, they'll also get a postcard, all within the same envelope. It'll be a little labor intensive, but kicking the can down the road isn't gonna solve this, so we'll figure it out. And then as those balances get paid off, it'll be less and less. And hopefully, we're planning to offer some sort of discount, two or three dollars for when people sign up for paperless billing in that platform to incentivize it. I feel like Rocky Mountain Power offers something similar for that.
Just about. Everybody does, so. Lily brought it up, but I'm like, I don't see any reason not to.
Yeah, so we'll have a cover letter in the bill just saying, welcome to our new platform, log in, you'll receive a credit. You know, just explaining it, a little letter with each of the bills.
Uh thanks, Lily. Jessica?
Um not quite a bit, but I'll try and skin roll it through pretty quick. Um so the biggest thing that we've got going on right now is our current collaboration with um the Mark and the Arts Department, like we do every year. Um so our two artists, Pimo and Jess Ho, or Howe, I remember how to say her last name. Um they have already done their initial uh material grabs and will be doing their workshops this week. So Pimo's is Friday from eleven to three at the CRC. And it's going to be um the, you may have seen it already, but we're, we have reclaimed materials that are now starting to decorate the fence line of the CRC. Um I peeked by it today, eleven to three on Friday. Um already peeked at it today. It's starting to look really good and I think it's gonna really help with beautification of the CRC. And then Jess's is on Saturday. I forget the time, but um we'll be doing paper making that is bicycle powered.
I saw that, yeah.
Um everything has been uh pulled from the landfill or from the transfer station, um sheet metal pile. Um so that's going on right now. Um starting April twenty eighth through May fifth, we have the spring voucher program that is being done in collaboration with Grand County Emergency Department for their wildfire prevention program. Um and that is available to Grand and San Juan County residents. Um, like Mike, uh, Mike said, mulch is back, and it is going fast, very fast.
I will tell my hand, that's. That's the mulch.
Yeah, mulch is going very quickly, um, the mulch, or the March newsletter went out, um, and let's see, there's so many things, uh, met with the Moab City Sustainability Director Vista and a compost consultant to discuss composting grants, eligibility, the current state of composting, or basically composting strategies and grant opportunities, right now, we, um, just, this is just an initial brainstorming, seeing what we have right now in terms of composting, what they're thinking about, our eligibility for the program, their eligibility, and then also what the asks would be. Um, and once they kind of get, uh, a couple ideas together, um, we'll meet again with Chris and Mike and see which uh, opportunity would be the best suited in moving forward, if possible to move forward. Um, we, we've got the Earth Day event with the city collaboration coming up, um, on four twenty, and the theme of that is, um, from what I've been told, is going to be trees, so.
The tree is trees.
Trees. I'll be attending the RCU conference in Canav on April eleventh through the twelfth, with a focus on battery recycling and management. Um, we'll be talking about how the state is handling that, how, um, battery recyclers are doing that, and then discussion on solar batteries, EV chargers, that sort of thing, and then I'll also be doing a live demonstration of a battery fire. See, um, this demonstration that we did at H and K went fantastic, um, that was a long day, I saw approximately five hundred kids and parents, and demonstrated to them the magic of recycling paper, or making recycled paper. Um, and it's kinda funny, I had a little bit of recycled paper left over that had the wildflower seeds in it, and it is currently sprouting. So, that lets me know that it was a success, so we have flowers growing out of paper right now. Um, let's see. A lot of administrative tasks also being done, um, just kind of little things here and there, updating our Klondike franchise agreements, the documents that are necessary as part of their agreement, um, such as, um, permitting, or not permitting, but, um, just make sure that they're still a valid company, updating information, uh, insurance, and so on and so forth. Um, uh, uh, working on, um, job and board vacancy postings, as y'all seen, social media graphics, and with the newest find about the cease and desist, I've also been aggressively going through all of our resolutions and making sure that they are scanned to the servers, so not only we're not just relying on these paper copies from nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, that I actually was able to during COVID, and there wasn't really much else to do, I just went through boxes of old things, and was actually able to find the wet copies of resolutions from, you know, when I was born. Um, and then some future considerations that I've been thinking about doing, um, is working on ideas to update and streamline the website and do a site-wide audit to identify incorrect and obsolete information and prevent confusion, because that seems to be comments that I get occasionally, that someone's like, well, I read that on your website, and I'm like, oh, that's a page I have not touched yet. So I think it would be helpful just to go through and make sure we've got correct information, remove all redundant information. And we have also been invited to come back as a guest chef for, uh, the Youth Garden Project. I haven't made any determination on participation, but I think it'd be fun, especially since we got rained out last year and wasn't actually able to serve at the weed and feed, so, um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica, Nick, you have anything?
Yeah, just, uh, continuing to work on scrubbing the twenty twenty-three financials, getting those ready for the audit, uh, working with Chris and Lily on some, some topics related to the financials, um, need to get back up to date on the twenty twenty-four, um, financials for July, or for January and February, so I wanna get those, the revenue items posted there, um, so yeah, just continuing to to scrub those and make sure we got a, a good presentation for when the audit happens in May. So that's what I have.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Nick, uh, board reports, Colin, you have anything to report?
Uh, just what I already did, my conversations with the, the city, and then also, uh, the person that I've recruited to be on the board.
Okay, great, Mary?
No, I don't, I will do wanna publicly acknowledge the help that Jessica gave me and her other half, as, uh, led us on to the bumper project, she created an incredible handout as well, we see, by all the people we met, so thank you.
She's very talented that way, yeah. Okay, thanks, Diane, you have anything?
Yeah, I, um, we're preparing for the Castle Valley cleanup on the thirteenth of, uh, April, and, uh, we're wondering about, um, I thought maybe while I have Chris and Mike here, I have a question that I don't know the answer to, and that would be if, if, uh, C and D wastes are only, uh, accepted at the Moab landfill, and we were to accept C and D waste on our cleanup day, would that be, be illegal, because I understand that this, these, uh, roll-offs that we get go up to Kl- Klondike, is that correct?
More, more than likely, but the, the one part you mentioned, there is only C and D can go to Moab, C and D can go to Klondike.
Okay.
But municipal solid waste can't go to Moab.
Okay, darn, I was hoping we could say it would be illegal for us to accept C and D, because we're not going to accept C and D, and we're gonna make that a, a point, because there's a lot of growth in Castle Valley, and we see it coming, and, uh, so we're just, I just thought maybe I could get something saying, we can't take it, it's illegal. Nope. All right, thanks, that's all I got.
Well, and we just run it straight from Castle Valley, straight out to Klondike too, cause it's a shorter venture, so yeah, that's, and we take it all out of Klondike.
Yeah. Oh, I guess there is one other thing, I'm working, have been trying to convince, uh, Community Rebuilds that they need to come and, um, stage themselves at the cleanup in Castle Valley on the Saturday morning, and take anything they want for their pop-up yard sale, which is the following Saturday, and, um, I'm waiting to get the, uh, they're voting tonight in Castle Valley to, uh, confirm that they're gonna have a cleanup, and, and when I get that information, then I'm, I'm gonna be going back to Ricky there at the Community Rebuilds and, and seeing if they can't, um, come and do that for us, um, they would get lots of stuff. So, that would be great.
All right, thanks, Diane, um, I've already kinda covered everything I was gonna cover in my board report as well, so let's move on to item E. Um, ratify straw poll from the March first special meeting. Who's, who's taking this one?
I don't have one.
I didn't know if there was anything to accompany this, I just remember it was not on the agenda at the special meeting, since voting cannot be done in a closed session, to my knowledge, so I thought we just needed to ratify that vote at this meeting. I move this on to recommended motions.
Uh, I think I'm ready to build it on, accepting.
It was, it was on the, the real estate deal.
Oh, oh, I, I, I so that, that meant to move forward, right?
Yes.
On, uh, uh, so I make a motion, we move forward on, uh, investigating and possibly selling the land that we own in Thompson Springs.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Okay, thank you, Colin, is there any discussion on that?
I, I guess, I guess I have, I have lots of questions, I did not make it to that meeting, and I don't know what a straw poll is.
That means that we, we took a poll, we, we found out that it wasn't an official vote, a straw poll isn't, like, like, you do it if you wanna know if you even wanna continue, is this something we wanna continue working on? Yes, no, and we said yes, we wanted to move forward.
We, we didn't make the vote on the agenda, so they could not actually vote on it after the special meeting, so we did the straw poll, and now we're making the official motion.
So, in the straw poll, I'm not revealing too much, we basically said we should kind of agree that we should pursue selling the, the land. So I guess today we would be voting on confirming that that, that's what we wanna do.
And, yes.
And proceeding with the, the real estate contract that, um, we are working on. Did I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, they are going to pay all closing costs, they threw that in as well. Um, so we, we should get full of one fifty-four in about sixty days, as long as everything moves along, and we make this official.
Yeah, that's so important, I mean, I, I'm gonna just, cause I know that Diane's a little concerned about selling the land, but we made an agreement with the county, we would not go back for that extra money, it was really clear that we were not gonna get that extra hundred thousand dollars, move up in the county again. We might ask, but they were pretty much, nope, you got your portion, and so finding this extra hundred thousand dollars somewhere is really good for us, we need it, because I don't see that coming to us, that extra, uh, TRT funds next year. We got, we still get the TRT that we originally asked for, the original, but remember, uh, Mike, and everybody went back and asked for extra, and they got it. I was, I was happy, but we were surprised, I thought we'd get pushback, nobody even argued, and it was a sin, but I, I was yeah, it was an easy sell, but they were very clear that they wanted us to mostly, you know, they were concerned about the facility that the workers used out at Klondike. They really felt like that was a high priority and a high need, and they gave us that money to fulfill that.
So, this is ju- Diane, this is just the official vote motion, um, to proceed with the sale.
I, I made the motion.
That's second.
Yeah, okay, any other discussion? Not, I'll call for a vote, um, I, I'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, Diane?
Yay.
Colin?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, yes, Chad, yes, uh, motion passes four zero. Uh, next item is, I have discussion item, Special Population Service Discount. And we'll probably do this in conjunction with item G, which is voting on a Special Population Service Discount.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, we raised our fees, it's no surprise, there's a lot of poverty in Grand County, I have some statistics on the handout, which I think we're all aware of. Um, I thought it might be, you know, if the board chooses, I, I don't wanna limit revenue coming in, cause we need money, but some people are choosing to cancel service and bring their garbage to the transfer station to save money. Um, the people that have complained have been elderly, I was looking at Grand County's tax abatement for indigent, indigent, and, um, oh gosh, what was, they have, uh, and low-income people, which are several multiple criteria, but one is homeowners at least sixty-five years or old that meet the income limitations, which change every year. From the Grand County's page, it was, uh, income of thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. I was gonna open this up to the board to discuss if we would like to offer a discount, it would not be advertised, I mean, it would be advertised similar to how the county is, like, it's on residents to know about it and contact us and fill out the paperwork for it, um.
Have you done, uh, any number crunching to figure out how much this is gonna lower our income?
It would be hard, cause we do not have demographics linked with any account, so overall, um, just Census Bureau from twenty twenty-three that I found, Grand County is twenty-point-six percent uh, of our residents are over sixty-five. But the percentage of that, that meets the income criteria, I'm not sure, the per capita income estimate from twenty twenty-two was thirty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars. I haven't been able to get a hard number, what that would look like if it was offered.
How, how would we know, how would we know if people were coming to the transfer station that were not coming before? How, how do we know that?
Cancelled accounts.
We wouldn't, it's just cancelled accounts, um, some people have brought that up.
And so, how many cancelled accounts would you say, ten or twenty-five or?
I mean, people, I don't have that statistic, um, people have cancelled, you know, for various reasons, the few that have cited the increased fees that I know of, I'm not the one necessarily fielding these phone calls, I would say it's between five to ten, but they are very vocal when they cancel. And they've asked to bring this up, and I brought it up previously, and here we have it as an agenda, I don't know.
So these criteria, would, would they just have to meet one of them to, uh?
Yeah, and we don't have to go with all of them, that's just how the Grand County does their property tax abatement.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I think you have to meet more than one, right, sixty-five and?
Yes.
Yeah, or sixty-five and?
Or, or hand, uh, bit, yeah, but income and?
And we could set it for whatever we want, these are just kinda guidelines.
How are we going to verify this, is something we're gonna do in-house, and do we have?
I, I imagine that we could.
Pick, pick it back on the treasure department.
Yeah, find out what the, who's getting property tax exemptions and, and at least.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Like, if they get that property tax exemption, or, or whatever, and then if they qualify for that, then they also qualify for this.
That, that could be, that might be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would be the simplest.
The burden of proof is on them, that.
So, but, you know, and.
I think that's a small enough list that, um, oh gosh, the previous deputy treasurer knew them all by name, that was a small enough list.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I, I think that's reasonable.
And I do too, but does that, I think that addresses the problem, if it's that small of a list, and there's more people than that, they're gonna, I mean, a lot of people are gonna complain about the rate, rate increase.
And we also are surprised in doing this, um, previously, I thought it was fifty percent of Grand County school children received free or produced lunch, it's now forty percent, since incomes have gone up, but prices of everything have gone up here, so they're not really, it's hard to capture everybody.
Well, you know, the last time we had a discussion similar to this, I don't think, people may disagree, but it was with the, uh, Community Rebuilds and and, um, some services that I think we were providing for them, and, and I remember that previous, uh, um, director said that, um, entities such as the Solid Waste District don't, um, how did that work? I don't know how it worked, but it was, it was, uh, the brakes were put on, on because it wasn't necessarily, uh, what is, what's typically, uh, done in, in, in our position.
Utilities, understood.
So I don't know, that's just something that we decided back then, so are we gonna make a decision now that's gonna go against what we decided not more than two or three years ago? I don't know.
Are you referring to the, the last year when we agreed that we, we couldn't give, uh, discounted or, or pre-service to any any non-for-profits, cause it, it, it could open up the door for everyone, from the Boy Scouts to all of the above, even the it was the sheriff asked for a discount.
Those are commercial accounts Chris brought up, and these would be residential.
Yeah, be residential, not commercial, and it is a small, we approve them every year.
And it would be, you know, across the board, anybody that qualifies, as opposed to.
Oh, Mary, you have to, the, the commission has to approve the?
Yeah, Chris brings it to us. We've all got it, it's always a slam dunk, I mean, if they qualify, you know, we're not gonna say, well, no, we're not gonna.
Absolutely, and I, but I, I'm wondering too if we'll see more, if we do away with the sixty-five gallon bins, if those people, cause a lot, is, is my understanding correct that, that a lot of people use a sixty-five to?
Well, yes, we would, the ones that have the sixty-five now would not, would not, they wouldn't see any change in service.
Okay.
It just wouldn't be offered going forward. Good point, but.
Got it, got it, yeah.
And this was just a, opening this discussion, it was a possible, um, goal, so there's no requirement today.
Yeah. I'm, I'm. I'm generally.
I, I would, you know, well, you know, I'm a supporter, so you know, yeah, I would like to help anyone that is really truly struggling. But I do want to, I do know there are people who, not a whole bunch, but I wanna make sure that people would get it, deserve it, and that we don't have it on. Deserve it and that we don't have it on, you know, but it doesn't. So I think taking, you know, people who. Get the. First taxes, the small number. Would get a lot, but what what kind of rate, I think, I think you need to come with some numbers for the next meeting.
Yeah, I was recommending the thirty percent discount to maintain the twenty twenty-three pricing. So that the service, you know, that they would maintain that rate. Um that it could be thirty percent lower if we choose to increase it in twenty twenty-five, if they would see an increase then, but it wouldn't be.
Can we do a pilot program?
I don't see why not.
And that way, if we find out, it's just freshness. Of course, it's always hard to go back and ask.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we could do it for a calendar year, but it would be, yeah, or like three months, I don't know, that would be.
It'd be hard, never mind.
And we can't, we can't. Hundred percent verify how much of a a hit we would take, because not everybody signed up for service. So some of these people on the list might not have service to begin with.
Well, and I think though, if we take in consideration some of the reports, this new AMCS uh software, we'll be able to get it. It's just like you had mentioned, that we don't have the demographics, we don't have a lot of numbers to to be able to quantify really anything. So I think if we gave this maybe just a little bit of time to where we can fully implement and fully utilize the this new software. That we probably could come with some better numbers.
I think it's worth pursuing. And I think if people get a hold of you or or you get feedback from the people, they'll say. We are, we're in the process of pursuing that and that I would. Would we be comfortable saying there are most likely be some program in the future that will help people who we need?
And and maybe we can even start internally keeping a list. Of people, we can say, hey, we're 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 trying to make it work, maybe if you'd like, we can put your, put you on the list.
And contact you, we won't have the numbers punched. How do you feel?
All right, yeah, I agree, maybe even ask them, I don't know, want to ask if they are on that tax.
I might just reach out to the treasures office and see if I can request, I mean, if it's approved by the county, it seems to be a public list.
On some minute somewhere. It's like they come up and they.
Okay, thank you, also considering that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? I guess we're not gonna be voting on that.
Actually, just one real quick more, because I think the difference too is gonna come with this, where the city, where the city is mandated. To be able to to have to have trash, where the county does have this option. City is is mandating their trash, so maybe, you know, that gives us until, I'm not sure when the.
I think it's June.
So maybe we should try to put something together.
By June first, that's an idea. That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I think the population of the city is slightly moderated.
Yeah, that gives us two more meetings. So by the May meeting, we should have a solution.
How much money are people saving roughly bringing stuff up here, rather than just having it picked up at what seems like a pretty reasonable?
Minimum payment now is five dollars, so if you do that twice a month, it's ten dollars versus thirty-two dollars a month if you're in the county. It used to be a dollar a can, I was not, I didn't have garbage service, so I started working here, it was two dollars a month for us.
They just bring one bag. You know, five plus a dollar.
Colin, the answer to that question is, how much garbage do each household generate? And so I don't, you know, I take my stuff and and it's a two-family hu- hu- household and. We go up to the transfer station, maybe uh. With four small, I'd say they're more like sixty-five gallon ones, four of those, probably. Four times a year at the most. So the comparison isn't even, it's not even close.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just saying that those little, I'm just saying that there's some education in in this uh exercise.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. We'll uh we'll look forward to that, the next meeting. Um item H, ratified ACH payment to family auto collision and.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um so in the past, it seemed that all ACH payments were ratified by the board. This was a time-sensitive payment, uh Mike and I tried our best to put it on the credit card, it didn't work out, I paid them via ACH, um that was in. I believe it was in the February twenty-third um check packet that board members signed off on, but. Just to like dot all of our eyes, if you can vote to ratify approving that ACH payment Mary suggested this.
It it was a a vehicle we damaged. That we found out on Thursday, it was gonna be done, and the owner needed it for the weekend. And they had to have payment Friday morning, and for some reason, our credit cards would not go through. Tried for well over an hour.
It was over the maximum limit, it seemed, for an individual purchase, and we needed Mary to approve it, Mary's not available at the drop of the hat, understandably, so it was. It's either Mike and I put it on a personal credit card or pay ACH, and we decided. We don't want to mix our personal finances with the district's. Um so I would just.
I would move to uh. Accept the payment to for the family auto collision. The A A A C H.
Is is this a one, is this a one-time thing, is that what we're talking about, this one-time thing?
Well, it leads into the next agenda item, but this was a one-off ACH payment, Diane, that won't need to happen to this vendor again. But just for circumstances, I needed to pay them electronically this way, directly from the bank account.
So one-off doesn't mean just this one time, it means that when the next time comes around and and Mary's not available, but we need to to. To come up with the money, that we could do that if, and that's what you're asking us to vote on?
No, not not in this one, that will be the next one, this is just to ratify, so post-action approve this payment that I made.
Oh, okay, well.
You're a step ahead of everybody.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Not, I'll call for a vote, I think this requires a roll call vote as well.
Yeah, money.
Um Diane?
Yay.
Colin?
Yes.
Mary? Chad, yes, motion passes four zero. Um item I, ACH electronic payments for vendors, this holder's questions Diane, and I bet you'll they'll be answered here in a minute.
So um obviously checks are time-consuming to sign, um they also cost money with um purchasing the actual checks, envelopes and stamps. You know, more and more vendors are offering electronic payments, and I would ask um that the board approve. You know, just to expedite payment um to consider allowing ACH payment as just a standard payment type to vendors.
Would this, would this mean that we don't need to come up and sign checks?
We still have to look at the. You'd still have to look at everything, but the payment would already. Be there, there would be like a confirmation of receipt, um so like current vendors, we pay like this, or Verizon Wireless, uh utilities. Um the postal service for our bulk mailers, but there are just other vendors such as Reladyne, which is a fuel supplier, just to expedite payment to them. Would, for an example, this would allow me to pay them that way.
For reoccurring monthly uh accounts.
And that's why we're bringing this up, each time we have a new vendor to just have this be a standard practice.
So the change would be the the default would be ACH, and then if that that wasn't a possibility, then he would do the check.
For example, like P H P, our health insurance requires paper checks, I can't pay them.
So it's a we, so I think what, when we come, we'll see the re, we'll do the initial, that we look at it. Call that, yes, it was Verizon, it wasn't Lily. Make sure it wasn't Chris, whatever, you know, and then we start with initial.
We ready for motions?
Lily, I have one more question, here's the dumbest question of all, what does A C H stand for?
I think it's automatic, automated clearinghouse, I don't know, Nick could probably speak to it.
Yeah, automated clearinghouse, it's just a methodology the banks use to transfer funds.
Okay, alright.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve electronic payments for vendors of solid waste special service district one.
Uh thank you Diane, Diane's second. Um any other discussion? Not, um oh Diane, that was not really a dumb question, by the way. Um I didn't know either. Anyway, I'll call for a vote, um. All in favor?
Bye.
Uh motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, that's that's gonna make our time time easier. And the guy had to run down because one check didn't have a. Pay a lot of signature, I had to run down.
Checks lost in the mail, which is.
Remember the wind?
The wind incident?
Yeah, so yeah, this would be a lot better, a lot easier. We've already done the glass.
I do sometimes get a kick out of signing like a really big checks, like there's a two-hundred thousand dollar check, that's kind of fun to sign. Yeah, maybe.
I think this is life-changing for all the time you guys do come down and sign.
Yeah, perhaps.
The check sign.
Need a purple tunnel.
We still have to look through the receipts for the uh credit card, they say that's where number one fraud is, it's the most important thing we do. It's making sure there's a receipt posted each.
Yeah, okay, um item G, I think we pretty much discussed it, yeah, so it's, I think. You guys don't object, we'll just move on to the item K. Uh offer a stipend to non-county or city representative board members.
I think that's important, I mean. You know, not that we get paid a lot, but we are, this is part of our job, just like it's part of your job. But you guys are volunteer, and even though most volunteer boards are only two times a month. Just for also have signing checks two times a month, and signing, we'll still have to come in and do that. Uh there's a lot more research, you're making harder decisions. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's not like the cemetery door, you know, if there's a lot of boards that, you know, and then there's a lot of advisory boards. That don't make hard decisions, but you're making decisions uh that. Are very, affect the entire community financially. And I think if we're, uh you know. We have, we don't now, but we've had board members that do next to nothing. And we could demand that, you know, it would say, you know.
You know, that's that's the thing, Mary, that I think if we if we want to do this, I think that's wonderful, I certainly support it. But I think that there has to be something in writing that kind of lays out those responsibilities that you just. Uh express, so that everybody knows what's their responsibility and and that's a job description.
It's hard to write job descriptions for boards, but that you, you know, that you uh that you come to the special meetings, that you. Uh read the, you know, many emails we get. That you, uh you know, there's just, I don't know, I, it's been a, it's been a hard board since I've been on it, it's been the hardest board.
It's definitely gotten more difficult in the last couple of years.
Since we took over.
And for me in the last two months, my my.
I can't be chair, and I did did double-check that, I can't, because I, this is a county board. And I can't be chair of a county board, I can, you know, I can't be chair on any of the boards. Our county. Uh but I, you know, we could, what we do in the county is the chair gets a higher stipend. Than uh the other two, than the other members, as chair is a lot of more work. It's a lot more work, but then it's not like it's gonna make a huge difference, but it might help with vacation.
Yeah.
And how much was it, when you?
I think I think it's five thousand of this, the boards, board members are allowed to pay, it's maximum of five thousand. Reimbursed, paid, I'm not sure what the. What the right term is.
Your city does it for their.
Planning commission on a per-meeting basis, so if you don't attend the meeting.
And you.
You don't get paid at least.
So. No, go ahead.
It's um seventy-five per meeting. Um you only get paid if you attend the meeting and you're required to. Attend, I will, I can't remember if it's sixty percent or seventy percent of all the meetings, if you don't, then. I believe you're eligible to be voted off. Because you're not fulfilling the obligations as part of this decade.
That actually brings up one of the things I was gonna ask, I give, like Diane raises a good point of how are you, you know. These, we we need to, uh my questions are like, who would we be beholden to as as, like, I mean, who would like? Who would I answer to, like, if I'm if I'm not doing my job? As a board member, I mean, is it the rest of the board, and how does the board, the board just?
Yeah, when when we have to.
Spartan bylaws that are.
Yeah.
It's something to do this, I just want to like, feeling that.
Alright.
Okay, uh. I I think, I think it would be appropriate. And and I feel comfortable advocating for it because I won't be giving it. I don't, you know, it's, I just, it's although it's a lot of work. Other board members are, and other boards, there are a lot of work, but uh. I do think that the three, when when we get three deserves something.
And it might attract more 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 in, more interest, because it is a lot of work, like, you know, with you, like you said, it's kind of. Part of your guys' gig, but try to get somebody in here that's just volunteering to. Deal with all the, everything that goes on here, I mean, that's, it's kind of a lot to ask.
And you're making decisions that affect the entire county.
And and it really deserves to be like some kind of effort put into it. I mean, to 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 really serve the community, rather than just showing up, I mean, there's a lot of our decisions. There should be some effort put into understanding what those decisions are about.
I agree, when I uh signed up the board five years ago, my my main, like, I I really genuinely did it. Because I wanted to give back to the community, I I wanted to have, you know, just be. Was I was pure, not not purely altruistic, but I mean, that was, that was major motivations, I wanted to to contribute, but it's become very demanding. And I don't, you know, I have a pretty special skill set that aligns with this board pretty well. Um I don't think you'd be able to find other people with a similar skill set that would be willing to do it for. Pro bono for as long as I have. So I think, you know. I, yeah, I'm I'm not, I would be foolish to turn down the money, but I I want to put it out there that I did, that I have enjoyed, you know, being. Doing this as a. The contribution to, you know, just being part of the community, I I I don't want to speak for Diane, but I suspect she's.
They're both very involved, you come to the meetings, you 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 research things. I just think we should uh go ahead and and look at changing, uh because it's not going to be that big of a chunk out of wealth.
And Diane, and Diane does have something to say about that. Um I feel the same way that Chad did, I'm here because I have a passion, not for solid waste, but for recycling. And um I I've thought about this because I knew this was a conversation we were thinking about, and I would not. Want uh five thousand dollars for my services, but I would not want anybody, including Chad, to feel badly. About the fact that I don't, I don't want the money, I I I do it because I do it, and it's just a volunteerism, but I think that. I do promote it, and I think it's something that, looking now for uh new members on this board, and. I just feel that we, I I would like to qualify that we need something in writing that shows what the responsibilities are. For these board um board posts, that's all I, I think that would be the 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 good thing to do, to come along with it. But I don't, I don't want compensation, I I get mostly joy out of it.
Well, thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
And and that's always, you know, there are, I I don't know if they did it, but there were commissioners that said they were not going to take their. And and uh their holder this year, you can, you can turn things down.
You can always make a contribution to wherever.
Or take the money and give it to the recycle center directly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do that, I suppose.
I would have to give a ten ninety-nine.
If it's, if it ends up being over six hundred dollars for the year, then there would be a ten ninety-nine, but then. Um depending on your own individual tax situation and your tax advisor, you could offset it with expenses like uh round trip mileage and things like that.
Oh, yeah, round trip coming out here to sign check.
Coming out, money than I'm, more work than I'm willing to do.
Yeah, it's it's trade-off.
Should we?
So let's, I I recommend that we direct the staff to look at uh. After, you know, when, I'll put it as high priority, because we can do, and we can do retroactive if we want.
I I don't want to cut you off, uh that's kind of where I was headed, should we tie this, we're gonna redo the bylaws and the the procedures and policies. It's gotta be done, it's gotta be official.
And the the procedures and policies, it's gotta be done. It's gotta be official. Um, it's definitely on the list. Should we tie this in with that? Um, obviously, we'd like to get it in place, but. Do some research, see what other districts do, uh, see if we can get some job descriptions that they might have. And 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 bring examples and and talk about it. Uh, it's not something we get done immediately, obviously, but should we work that way?
Yeah, especially if we're gonna pay people retroactively. There's not a huge urgency with it.
Well, the one urgency is that we do have a board vacancy.
Yeah.
And that would service a carrot to incentivize somebody to buy, might push them over the edge to fly.
And like, oh, that much more money a year, I think I could uh afford to fly first class, maybe.
But I I think, I think we have two what sounds like really great candidates that that uh, you know, without anything. Without that carrot are just interested in joining board for the same reasons you did. Um, so.
Okay. Then.
If we have troubles filling it, we have put it on a hot faster track.
And and I do think that some some wording in the uh, some kind of mechanism in the the bylaws uh. Cause I think when you, when you give more, you 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 can ask for, I don't think that uh. Yeah, just having us, I think, whatever that, whatever that looks like and however other other boards.
Yeah.
That.
Um, to you, just a a very rough estimate. I was thinking in the fall, like September, presenting new bylaws.
AMC implementation comes first and foremost. Um, but right behind them, we can be looking at.
And we can decide if we wanna do it retroactively or if we wanna start it in two thousand twenty five. We can decide that in September.
You okay with that, Chad?
Yeah, I'm alright with that. We, did we, I remember we talked about this during the budgeting process, but did we put it in the budget this year? I don't think we did.
I didn't see it and I asked Nick, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't remember it being in the budget.
No, that's not, it wasn't in the budget.
Alright, um, okay, well, yeah, go ahead, I guess.
We don't have a closed session, correct?
Oh, my apologies. I don't believe we do.
Yeah, no.
Oh, you could always put that you can.
Okay.
I always say a closed session if necessary, if in accordance with, is that referring to a type of closed session?
Oh, that's just saying, like, if you're talking about like personality or real estate, i- it's in the Utah code of like when boards can go into.
That's what you're saying, that's fine. But yeah, just don't put down to discuss character or competency or litigation because. And that, but if we we, you have it on yours, don't you?
What's that?
Oh, you you have a constant, uh uh always have closed session if necessary. You just hold it there in case something comes up in the meeting, like all of a sudden you have to talk about a personality.
So we actually did skip item L, which is the next board meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, the seventeenth of April. Um, I'm gonna be traveling that day. I'm wanting a board to be willing to, uh, board and staff will be willing to move it to the following Wednesday, the twenty fourth. Or some other day that week. And we don't have to actually decide that right now, but it's just something to keep in mind.
That that would work for me.
But if, but if we can decide it right now, let's do it.
Let's do it. I I have an economic development meeting at three, I could uh. I'm a non-voting member, so it's not so important, but I am part of the quorum, which I don't understand how that works. Anyway, if if we could start it at four thirty would make it easier for me.
Okay. Okay.
The twenty fourth at four thirty, that's good with me.
Oh, twenty fourth, okay, sorry.
Okay.
At four thirty, okay.
Yeah, and I might still run it, running a little late.
Okay, that's fine. Just bring the chips. Okay, and we've done item M and if there's nothing else, item N uh N is uh, there's no further business, then I will adjourn this meeting.
And I won't, won't, won't miss much of my child, my grandson.
Thank you.
And he turned a corner this year. He used to just, he would just run with the pack during the job. Run with the pack.